Okay. Now you call on a meeting back in the session. Yeah, let the record reflect that after executive session, there'll be no official actions taken by council. I'm in the downtown committee report. Brenda and the mayor's on that.
Still getting things together. Yep. Trying to figure out what we're gonna do. Are we gonna come up with more of a description of what each committee is set to do? I don't know if there's really anything, because you know, the downtown committee was kind of an afterthought. And then is there something regarding, you know, each committee that's defined as what public safety does, what Public Works does, what... I mean, for us to get an idea of what our core goals are, mission statement, that kind of thing.
You know, as we discussed briefly about having another committee, an advisory committee, I think that would be a very good task for them to kinda help with.
Sure.
So, you know, that's definitely gonna be in the table and help for this month. We need to meet with someone else. Okay, moving along. The Public Works report.
You have a copy of that report in your packet. The winter's been good so far. We'll be getting to the potholes about that, about the... They're not as bad since we, this year, that since we didn't have to put all that salt and everything on to tear 'em up. But as the weather gets a little bit warmer, right, Tom? We got the patching material on hand. And the one down by Boundary and Corbett Street seems to be the worst one. But we'll be getting to them as soon as we can. And if anyone knows of any that hasn't, that eventually don't get done, call the maintenance department, tell them where it's at, and we'll take care of it.
Okay, we're gonna have that one permission to solicit price quotes.
Yeah. Okay, the other, the ordinance, take care of it. The other is that it's... I move for permission for, to solicit a price quote for the storm sore construction material. And that's paid, will be paid out of the EPA grant funds. I think it's between three and $5,000 left in that. Am I right, Linda?
Yeah.
Yeah. And I don't wanna give it back to them. So, I think we may use it. Is it for handicap, right?
We're gonna use, that's the storm source.
For what we're going to do. But anyways, I move that we have Taunt and send a letter requesting that money so we can... We need it more than they do.
He's requesting the quotes.
Get a quote, yeah.
Do I have a second on that motion?
I'll second it.
Any discussion on that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Motion carried.
That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Public Safety report.
We have not met yet. Recreation was my primary goal this month. But between Andrea and Chuck and I, we will be meeting sometime in the month that we work. We're trying to set a date that we know from every month, when we need what we have.
Okay. Fire Hall update briefly. We agreed, our COPCO engineering basically signed off on the final payments. Those are paid to our contractor. There is one bond left for final inspection, which will be done down at a later time. And so, other than that, everything's taken care of. Workplace Safety. Chief Chuck.
Well, we've had two meetings already. One at the end of January and one this morning. We've got a couple of places inspected already. We made some, a couple of notable changes out of the Borough Building for safety. Very neat committee, we're working right along.
Okay. Housing and zoning.
The Housing and Zoning Committee has not met yet. We will decide on a meeting here, hopefully by the beginning of next week. There is a blue information sheet in your packet that describes all of the housing and zoning projects and things that have happened so far in Borough. Mostly handled, I assume, by Bob. Other than that, that's all there is.
Okay. We've already done Recreation Secretary's report.
Just a few things. The required 2011 reports have been submitted to DCED, and they have proven. Highway Eight, which also was Liquid Fuel's report for 2011, was submitted, and the final report is completed. We also met with the financial consultant to discuss audits on the two grants which have been brought up by Linda earlier. So, we're up to date with our grants. And that's about all that I have.
Okay, thank you. Mayor's report.
I'll report this time.
Okay, old business. New business.
Mr. President.
Yes.
At the last meeting, or the last several meetings, there has been discussion on how we are running our meetings. So, I'm offering at this time, information on a parliamentary procedure. And I'd like to offer a motion that this body at this time adopt Robert's Rules of Order by which to proceed with our business meetings. This information was taken from the web. I tried to do a thorough search. Everything that I found referred me back to Robert's Rules of Order. There was information that said the Congress of the United States uses Robert's Rules of Order to run their business. So, my motion is that we adopt Robert's Rules of Order by which to run our business meetings.
Okay, do I have a second on that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion on the motion?
Well, Brenda, I wanna thank you for doing this, because it's, it's, seems like it took you a little bit of time to come up with all this. And I'm certainly in agreement with adopting some form. Robert's Rule seems to be the one that's used the most. In fact, I talked with a gentleman from the university, and he's aware of a few others, but this one is just the one that seems to be used by, by most parties. So, thank you for putting in the time. We have two more.
I'd just like to say that basically, I mean, yeah, we need rules, this is great, but I want time to read it. I can't learn on something I just got handed.
Um...
I mean, I wanna read through this. There's a couple different, I've been reading them, I've been reading Jamie's, I haven't made some email, and a couple of orders.
The ones that Jamie sent are basically the same.
Okay.
But what you handed me, I thought you'd read.
I just researched the information. This is, it gives you some basic, the National Association of Paralegal, of parliamentarians, information from them, how they run meetings, and the rules that they give, Robert's Rules of Order.
Kind of, guys, just so everybody's clear, are we adopting these summary sheets? Or we're just, or we're adopting the Robert's Rules of Order as they're published?
My motion is to adopt Robert's Rules of Order as they're published. Now, what, that's, this is just basic information that I pulled.
The only, I wanted the motion to be clear that the packet that you handed out, handed out was just a summary of those rules, and you're actually proposing that the rules be adopted.
Yeah, yes.
As I stated before, you know, Robert's Rule's a good one to start with. I thought that, that as the admin committee, that we were going to put together some type of, as stated, some type of procedures of running a meeting, pass them out to everybody, and let them have their opportunities to say, this is what we wanna do. And then it can be clear to everybody. You know, we haven't had that chance to quite do that, but that was one of the hopes that we were hoping to do. I mean, so, I just throw that on the table. That was one of the thoughts, is to make the, you know...
Are you indicating that we will not use something that's published and proven, and that we will make up our own rules?
We would all agree upon those rules before we do something by that.
No, no, my question is, are you, are you indicating that we would not use something that is published and proven, and make up our own rules?
We would all agree upon the rules of the way this order would be run. That we would agree upon. I'm just throwing out what we've discussed prior.
And I'm agreeing with what Chuck said. To hand this out to me now and tell me to vote for it, no. It would be like, and this has been the objection, that only some people knew and some didn't. You were out of the loop. If I gave you a copy of, from Public Works, okay, I want this passed tonight, I'm sure I wouldn't get a majority of council members sitting here, in fact, without taking it home to look at it.
Are we not familiar with Robert's Rules of Order?
I'm saying I, I want time to look at it.
Ask Mr. Simpson. Just a question for the previous Borough Council members from last year. Did they adopt, or they run under Robert's Rules?
No.
They performed under Robert's Rules, they just didn't adopt it. They joined fabric, did, you know, the basics of motions, seconds, and all of that. But it's never formally been adopted.
Has it, has it ever been formally adopted, does anyone know?
I don't, no.
No.
But the reason I brought it forward is because several times in the process of the last, since January 3rd, there have been issues that come up, and we have been told that we're not running under any rules.
It is adopted by most boroughs. I mean, and town, you know, townships, municipalities, and things of that nature. It's not uncommon. It's more uncommon to not adopt than it is to.
And just on this particular motion, is this something that could be adopted on an annual basis? Or is this something, I guess it would have, we'd have to re-adopt it after each reorganization? Is that, or...
No, my understanding is this, once it's adopted, it would remain in effect, and so you change it or unadopt it.
I move to table. The motion until another time, Tom.
Okay, do I have a second on the table? Mr. Bartley, second the rules to table? Any discussion on tabling the matter until council has a thorough investigation of it before we adopt it?
Is it my understanding then that it'll be placed on the agenda for the next meeting? It's being tabled to the next meeting now?
Yeah, like to the next meeting.
You have a motion to table it to the next meeting. Can I have a vote on that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm thinking. We're going to discuss it.
Frankly, I would like to read it, and I will go along with you to adopt it. If you will let me read it this moment, and get myself reappointed this moment. But I will vote with you.
I, I, the only thing I'm saying is that the issues have been so complicated. And we have been told, no, you can't do it this way, yes, you can do it this way. If we have a set of rules in place by which to operate, then again, we don't have people questioning what we're doing, or people saying, what happened? Or why was it done this way? Why did you table that and didn't move forward? Why did one person control everything? That's all I'm saying.
I agree with you.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to table this until next meeting. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed?
No.
No.
Okay.
I'm a little confused on that. Can we do a roll call?
How was, can we discuss it now? Adopt it now, if anyone, I don't know.
My understanding, the motion, there's currently on the floor, a motion in the second to adopt Robert's Rules of Order. There's currently a motion to table it that has been seconded. It's my understanding that we're calling a roll call vote to vote on the motion to table it until the next meeting.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote to table to the next meeting.
Mr. Zarco?
Yes.
Mr. Simpson?
Yeah.
Dr. Sanders-Davey?
No.
Ms. Luton?
Then what would be our next step? May I ask the question? To adopt it then tonight, if we're voting, is that correct? We're voting to table it, it will be discussed at next month's meeting. If the three of us vote, we don't want it tabled, then what's our next step?
Then it's adopted probably tonight. We have to bring back up that motion.
Repeat that for me. I'm old, I can see your mind. A yes vote means we're gonna bring it back.
We're gonna table it to, to next month. It will be brought up on the agenda for next month. Have everybody time to read it and understand it.
Okay, then I'll vote yes on that, to, we read it and bring it back, and it's on the table.
Okay.
Mr. Bartley?
Yes.
President Walters?
Any other new business?
Putting after the council members that they're going to read this, right?
I'd like to read them, a lot issue that I addressed earlier in the evening. I'm having some concerns that this council voted that Chief Hall would remain the chief and only be the Secretary of Treasury to sign things. There is evidence, I have seen it. I'm concerned that he is serving as the emerald, and people are assuming and addressing him as the Emerald Borough Manager. If the vote was that he would not be the emer, Enerum Borough Manager, I think that we need to stick to that and not have people assuming that he is the Emerald Borough Manager, and that he is doing those duties, because he was not given that authority by this council. I don't know any other better way to put it. And again, I'm gonna say, like I said, the last meeting. It is not the person that I am addressing, it's the issue and the procedure by which we are doing things.
Okay, moving on.
No.
Is there any discussion, is there a motion?
How, how do you plan, how do you plan?
You wanna make a motion?
Why would I need to make a motion? A motion was already made and voted on.
On what?
That he would not be Emerald Borough, one of the managers.
And I think we all understand that.
Then how do you plan to, well, we have a, I have a letter in front of me that says, Mr. Mark Hall, acting Borough Manager.
I think that Mark and Mark misunderstood that, because it was very clear.
How did, how did they get that kind of information? That he was act, that, that was the possibility of him being acting Borough Manager.
I don't know if they misunderstood, because he was in that meeting, but we made it clear, he was acting Borough Secretary of Treasury. And every time I've talked to them, I've made that clear. I've been asked three or four times at the Borough Office if there's a Borough Manager, and I've said no. And they've asked me, what's gonna happen with it? And I said, I have no clue. It's not up to me. It's not my decision, we have no manager.
Again, it is not you. I just want to make sure.
No, I think it was a misunderstanding, and I think nobody has.
I just want to make sure that the public understands, and that this council reiterates that he is not the acting Borough Manager. He is the Chief of Police, and he's the acting Secretary. And that is, and that is for a temporary, that is not long-term.
I can assure you that at that telephone conference, he was never addressed as Borough Manager. It was always Borough Secretary. And Linda can attest to that. I don't know where they got that. They might have just, I don't know. It's a misunderstanding on their part.
And I will make that clear to them, but I know that when I sent for that information they were talking about, I said the Administration Committee was requesting that. I never even mentioned Borough Secretary of Treasury. And I can make it very clear to them that that was a mistake.
Or to anyone, or to anyone else, because, I mean...
Oh, I, I've been making it clear when people come in honestly. Three people have come in, and I know of, one came in today and said, is there a Borough Manager? And I said, no. And I'm making it clear, I, I have no decision on that. I can't do anything about that. We're operating without one, and we're doing the best job out there that we can, dealing with the things that need done to keep this Borough moving for the residents. I'm very clear on that. I'm very clear letting them know, I'm the Administrative Zoning Secretary, and that's where we're at. I don't know how else better to do it.
Okay. Any further new business? I've been hearing none, we'll go on to citizens' comments, not agendas. Yes, Mr. Clark.
Thank you. That's okay. I just would like to know, kind of following up on Dr. Sanders-Davey's comments, what your plans are to replace the position of Borough Manager, like what your timeline is for that? Because I think sharing some of that concern and going ahead of that, I mean, you have enough officers, they need a full-time chief. I mean, your staff, residents, we deserve a full-time manager. So, you know, I haven't seen any ads for recruiting, any type of movement on that, so I just thought I would ask and get some clarification of what the process or what your thoughts are where you are in that process.
My, my thoughts personally is, is we have a matter on hand that we're trying to get resolved. And as soon as that matter is resolved, then I think, then we can go to that next step. But right now, I think, I think we're focused on getting the first matter resolved, and then as soon as that matter's done.
I would also like to offer that I've done a search for a Borough Manager before, with myself, and I would be happy to help you if you need help in any great shape or form.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And I have one other comment I'd like to make. I do completely understand your position, going back to earlier in the meeting, about needing to conduct your business without constant citizen comment. That's why you have the citizen comment period. But I would like to suggest, maybe in your agendas, if you could put a little bit more of a narrative, or there's a way for us to get the information without having to interrupt and ask questions? Like, for example, when you're talking about, like whenever Mr. Zarco talked about the EPA grant funds, had he not volunteered the information that it's three to $5,000, that's not written? And we don't get your packet nor my saying, you know, I mean, if you wanna put the packet online, that's great. But it would be helpful, I know, like, when I used to do agendas, for each issue, I would put just a little paragraph. That would be like a summary of the issue with the pertinent information. So, you know, as you're moving ahead and considering your rules for how you're gonna conduct your business, I think you also should take that into consideration for how are we going to get the information to the residents so that we can mitigate that ahead of time and not, you know, run into those issues during the meeting? So, I just wanted to toss that out there, that I think it might be helpful to communicate that information upfront so that, you know, if it's not an issue, I do that.
Well, with the Citizen Advisory Board, that's gonna be one of the biggest concerns, I think, in letting the public know what's going on and getting that information. Wouldn't that be something that could be a project for them?
I mean, there's quite a few projects that we've discussed for them to say, look, here's some of the issues that we're having, could you help us out with some of these issues? And then they have their own...
Like a Facebook page, or whether it's a website, yeah.
Well, I mean, it's nice that you have the agenda online, I mean, that's nice, that's helpful. But it's just, I think it's missing that small, you know, even if you did like, you had just this basic agenda here at the meeting, but one online that had maybe a little descriptor paragraph. I mean, it wouldn't take much to do that. And I just think it would be really helpful for you to be able to more expediently get through your business without, you know, the public feeling that they don't know what's going on, and you feeling like you have to say, no comments.
The only problem with that would be is, we can't have one agenda posted online, and one different one here at the meeting. It needs to be the same.
Well, is your agenda that you get exactly what we have?
No, I'm not saying, yeah, yeah, that's what, all I'm saying...
Why can't you do that, though? I mean, this is why I'm asking this question. Like, when I used to be a manager at a council, my agenda that I would give my council for each topic had a fairly long narrative. And the one that I would have available there at the public meeting was just the topic headers without the full narrative. I mean, as long as they know the subjects that are being discussed, what difference does it? I'm just saying, I don't think that really matters.
Well, because anything that's presented here to Borough Council that they use as part of their process of decision-making is open to a right-to-know request. And that's what, we can't be distributing things to the public that are different than what they're reviewing up here. Otherwise, we're potentially misleading everybody. So, they have the same agenda that everybody else...
Right. But there's no reason why they can't have the agenda with the narrative on it as well. I'm saying, I think that would be helpful for everybody to have that.
Well, the only thing I'm saying is, if they wanna put that on the agenda, that's fine, but it needs to be the same online as what they're reviewing.
Sure. Right, but I'm saying, I think that would be a very simple fix. I mean, I'm not asking you to put all those reports that are in your packet. I'm just saying, you know, something like, where you're talking about for this pension claim, you could just put two sentences that say, this authorization is needed so that someone can sign the claim document. I mean, I'm not asking for the whole entire packet. I'm just saying, I think a little bit of a descriptor would be really helpful, because there are times where you guys are looking at this and looking in your packet and saying, can I have a motion on that? And we have no idea what you're making a motion, what you're, you know, just the pertinent facts. I'd be happy to give you an example of what we're talking about, if you can look at it and see if it's...
You know, one thing that we did do, because we knew we were having some trouble, so what we did ask was all the committees to meet, you know, before the admin committee, where we kinda sat down and go over the agenda. And Linda asked us to meet at times so we can work with the agenda and get it on the packets. Before, our committee meetings were sometimes after the admin committee. It was really screwed up. So, we're asking all the committees to do that before.
And I don't think it's so critical even for your committee reports. I'm talking about just the things that you're voting on, more so than anything. Because those seem to be the things that you're getting questions on, and they're very simple clarifications normally, like, how much is that gonna cost? Who is this person? You know, there's times when we see, like, for example, on the one thing where you had, like, approved Sam Lynch to do this. Well, most of us don't know who Sam Lynch is. So, that's what I'm saying, it's very simple, just, you know. I'm just saying, if you go ahead thinking about your rules of order, if you are gonna say, we're not gonna take comments or questions from the public during that, then you need to make, just need to make sure, you know, that you're giving us the information that we don't feel like, we don't know.
Just a question, because I don't know, and just for some historical perspective. Linda, has that, has there ever been a narrative?
No.
Okay.
We've always prepared.
That we can't change, I just, I don't personally know.
Well, in, in light of council, I mean, the public has not truly been involved. I mean, I mean, with South Street, so now with this, I mean, it's just a whole new territory, which I think it's a great idea.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, absolutely.
I just think, you know, you don't, I don't wanna say, I don't want you to get in a situation where you're trying to continue on with your business, and, you know, like, you make these rules, and we're glad you're making rules, but then it's hard for us to abide by them, because we really don't have to ask questions, because we just don't fish a hundred for knowledge. That's the problem.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
Hi, Rose Look. I have a question. This is a citizen. I wondered, since there isn't a Borough Manager, if you could just maybe highlight a couple of things that are not being done, because that position is currently not filled by somebody? I mean, I'm not really sure what the Borough Manager does, but it seems like if there isn't one, then there has to be something that's not being done right now.
I'll be honest with you, Rose, we've gotten the signatures, the employees. I feel extremely, and I'll say this, I feel extremely bad for Chief Hall, because he stepped up. Linda's done a great job. Bob, Tom, every employee has stepped up, and we're doing exceptionally well of running the Borough at, you know, with, with the people we have. This is a great effort by these folks. The signatures was probably the hardest thing that we had to get switched over. Again, tonight, we had to get some signatures, so we're, so we're good. But these people's done an exemplary job. And, you know, the calls that we've had to be on, we've gone out, we've done them. I mean, it's been a really exemplary job by, by every one of the employees. And that's, that's a really good thing. Employees did a tremendous job of stepping up and, and carrying on. So, I'm extremely proud of the employees.
So then, basically, there's not anything that's not being covered?
We are even trying to catch up. Todd, Todd's not here tonight, but Todd has really stepped up in some of the CMGB money. We have found some stuff that was kinda left uncovered. I'll just give you an example. Nothing to hide, we're throwing everything. When we paved South Street under the sewer project, we were... When we paved South Street under the sewer project, we were told, and Tom can, had in, that we needed to do handicapped things. We did not do that, Todd found that out, Todd's already went back and applied, say, can we move this money and can we do this? I mean, stuff like that, so we can get caught back up and say, we're, we're, we're in level. So every one of these employees have done some of these great stories that, we're, we're catching up. We're, we're gonna get back to level. Seventh Avenue was, was one that Tom brought to my attention and Tom knew what we had to do. Tom stood, you know, Todd stepped up and did that. So I mean, we're gonna get caught up in all this stuff to where, tonight was good to get the, our two, you know, fine new employees in Chris Neims and John Dunlap, you know, in the pension. We didn't realize that didn't go done for over a year. You know, we, we're trying to get everything back up, so right now, I, I gotta give a tremendous credit to the employees of their.
I think that's reassuring to, you know, it's reassuring to me to know that, you know, whatever we decide to do with the Borough Manager, then we can take our time and, you know, do it correctly.
These folks have did a tremendous job and I'm really, really extremely proud of them. Yes.
Elizabeth Fulmer, uh, with all due respect, Mr. Walters, perhaps we should ask the employees what needs to be done that is not being done, people who are there every day, on site.
If I can comment, I don't know of anything that has to be done that isn't getting done.
Anything that's not going to get done because it's not being.
Nothing I'm aware of, no.
So, we don't need a Borough Manager?
Asking the other one to.
So just, just, just wanting clarification, again, you know, wanting to know what's going on, so.
They're, they're here, if they want to make a comment, that's to them.
Every organization needs a leader, but right now, things are getting done and has to be getting done.
We can't stop, I mean, we can't stop doing what we're doing because of our situation.
But.
And we all pulled together, I, I would say, we went in after the meeting and I said, let's, we gotta do teamwork, so.
Of the employees, I would say you're probably doing.
I mean, we're doing the best job that we can deal with and I owe, I mean.
I'm just saying that the people who are not there every day. The people who are not there every day probably don't realize what you are.
Tell you truth, really, I've, I've been in touch with dude and them probably more than they want to know now, but, I mean, that's my job. I'm pushing it out there for everyone to know exactly what we're doing.
Since we're, I've been asked, since I've been asked this question before, why couldn't dude sign off on his pension stuff?
I'm not an employee, is what they told me.
Give him a dollar.
There's a lot of good people.
Actually, they are allowed to receive compensation according to the state.
Yeah.
The mayor's the only one who does.
I'm Bill Fulmer, uh, aside, I think that was a good point, that you really do need to listen to the employees and I'm glad that you are, I'm glad that they're, they're, they're feeling open enough to talk with you and they're not concerned enough about their own jobs, they feel secure that they can talk with you and, and be open. That's a good thing and I hope that continues. The other thing, I, I real, I'm sorry, but it's pretty hilarious. I've, I've been involved in a lot of different organizations, public organizations, we always use Robert's Rules of Order, okay? It's not a, what you're doing is you're operating in Fantasyland Rules of Order. You make them up as you go along, that's absurd, you can't do that. I'm surprised that your solicitor allows you to do that. Robert's Rules of Order is the framework in which you need to function. All this stuff that you're doing, you know, making motions, seconding motions, voting on, table, motions table, by the way, motion table always trumps the other motion that's on the floor, is that right? Okay. But that's in Robert's Rules of Order, okay? So you're kind of following, get real, get with it, adopt, okay? Quit being out there and none of all that. You need the framework.
Okay, thank you.
Jennifer Benson, um, in fact, when we were discussing Robert's Rules, I found it really interesting that a council person could sit out there and say that they didn't expect anybody to be able to vote on something that they hadn't read about or had enough information about. When the last council meeting, that person made a motion without hearing what a committee that had been formed to gather information and supply information to the rest of the council had brought to the meeting. Of course, it was then discovered that that committee never existed and those meetings never happened. But this council person was more than willing to make a motion right off the bat without hearing what that committee. And I had somebody ask me, well, what's a committee supposed to do? A committee is supposed to go out and gather that information, bring it back and set it on the table for everybody to be able to discuss at the same time and maybe have their eyes opened. Maybe there's some people who are just never gonna change their minds, but that's the way it's supposed to work. Not, but we've already decided and the committee was just sort of like, well, we'll just go through this, but it's not gonna mean anything because that was very obviously what happened at that meeting. And then it was even more convenient that it got thrown out. So, get those rules in order, we're not gonna go by Walters' rules. We're not gonna go by whoever else feels like making up their rules. Do it, it's simple, okay? I know you're getting really mad, Mr. Walters, you don't want to hear this anymore, I can see it in your face. But you, last month, you allowed us to have comments after a motion was made. Tonight, you, in the middle of the meeting, you didn't inform anybody at the middle, at the beginning of the meeting, what you were doing, it was in the middle when people tried to make comments, oh wait, no, we're not doing that anymore. That's inappropriate, okay? I get that you gotta get things done, we gotta get through these things, but there's a lot of things that come up during discussion and let's be honest, and, and like she said, we don't always have enough information, an ordinance number. I'd like to say I have all the time in the world to sit down and look at ordinance numbers, I, I don't. If it's a brand new one that's not in the books yet, there is no way I know what that's about just by the ordinance number. We have to have some more information in these minutes as to what that is. When I go up there and look it up, I have no idea what these are. True, I can go cross-reference the old ones, I can look it up, I can maybe find one of you and ask you, see if you know what it is. But I would like to be able to read about it so that I know ahead of time if I have questions about that, what happens, especially new ones, because they're not up on the books, they're not on the site, I don't know.
If I may, to address that one point, when they're advertised, they are, uh, there's specific information in there that you may obtain a copy at the Borough Office or from the solicitor or from the newspaper. So any proposed.
I guess I would just, I would, um, respectfully request that those be included in the minutes as a time saver to the citizens of the Borough. To help us, I mean, yes, I mean, we can all run down, we can ask Linda to stop what she's doing and give us a copy of this, you know, whatever ordinance is coming up, but it would be, it would be a time saver for the community and for the citizens of the Borough and the taxpayers in the Borough to have everything in one spot to where we can, um, review it a little easier. I mean, I appreciate you following the letter of the law, but let's get to the spirit of the law.
What I'm saying is, is that council will have to make a decision whether they want to, uh, you know, a, a practical problem arises, we never know how many people are gonna be at the meeting test, so how many ordinances are we supposed to make up, proposed ordinances that they're gonna discuss? In other words.
No, 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 what's already on the agenda, just what's already on the agenda.
But, but how many copies do we make for people that are gonna be here?
Put it, just put it on the, just put it on the agenda. Yeah, I go online and print mine off. And that's, I've noticed other people, so if there was just something, real quick to say, ordinance number 2012787, amendment to the Borough, clearing general employees pension plan, just a quick snippet of what that entails, that, that ordinance, that you've already advertised it, so I'm saying.
It hasn't been advertised.
It, I know, but you've asked permission and you thought of the permission. Click on it, it'll take you to the advertisement sort of to where it is on the Borough page, I mean. Yeah. And there could be a disclaimer on it that says, under approval or to be approved, you know, this has not gone through yet, don't get your panties in a bunch, this is up for permission for approval or something like that. You know, that, that could be something, I, I know a lot of people that, the, the, um, the traffic, I think, to the Borough website and especially on, I hate to say it, Facebook, has been increasing lately and people want to know, they want to be involved, not to make your lives any harder, but actually to make it a little bit easier so that there's not, you know, you've got Sally and you've got Tommy and you've got Janie and they all come together and they have this one story they hear. Well, then Sally goes to her yard and Janie goes to her yard and they tell Suzie and, and Tommy. Suzie and Tommy get a different story and it's whispered down the lane. Whereas if everybody could go to one place and be able to find the one thing, that's gonna save you guys a lot of time and a lot of face and a lot of explaining, uh, no, 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 this is what we meant, no, 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 this is what's going on. It's real easy, black and white, boom, there it is on the website, that's what we meant, no questions asked.
Mr. Walters? Just, just to comment back on what Jennifer has said, I, I agree that, uh, there should be some rules. And the reason why I asked tonight what the historical decisions of council on Rules of Order. Historically, they have not run under Robert's Rules. That's not to say that they shouldn't be or that can't change.
They've been promoted, they just haven't adopted them.
Right, but historically, this council has not, that, that's just the history and that's not to say we can't adopt them. The other thing as far as public comment, and I, I don't know what Mr. Walters' policy is, but I believe that the public has a comment to make that's pertinent to a particular situation. I, I believe by raising a hand, if it's at the president's discretion to acknowledge them or not.